Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Ellerby?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Prethridge?
Here.
Ms. Snively?
Here. And with six of us here, we will call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance for those who'd like to join us.
Our pledge of allegiance is in the land of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, infinite, just as all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Is that moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved and we'll move to public participation and we have, as some of you know, two proclamations and I'd like to start with the first one. Whereas Mildred and Richard Loving, an interracial couple from Virginia, were arrested in 1958 for violating Virginia's felony law prohibiting interracial marriage. And whereas the Loving family bravely took their case to the United States Supreme Court and won, overturning their conviction in a landmark 1967 civil rights ruling known as Loving versus Virginia. And whereas this victory overturned all laws banning interracial marriage nationwide based on the due process and equal protection clauses of the Fourteenth Amendment. And whereas collectively, we should fight to preserve our hard-fun fau- (lipsmack) you know, sometimes it's just hard to get the words out. Our hard-won civil rights and freedoms, including the right to marry people from other racial or ethnic groups and never take them for granted. And whereas the city of Oxford is home to a growing number of interracial and multiracial families. And whereas an annual celebration known as Loving Day is held on June 12th in communities throughout the nation to commemorate and celebrate the anniversary of the 1967 Loving versus Virginia victory. Now therefore be it proclaimed but that the city council hereby proclaims June 12th, 2023, as Loving Day in the city of Oxford and invites everyone to recognize this day as a celebration of multiculturalism and to reflect on Richard and Mildred Loving and all of the brave people who have and will continue to fight for the civil right and freedom to love. And I would like to, as just my own prerogative, I want to invite my good friends Bill and Sylvia Miller to accept this because on the 12th, they will celebrate their 57th wedding anniversary.
I'm gonna let Sybil do the talking, but yeah, it's a great honor to be asked to receive this proclamation on behalf of interracial couples and marriages that came actually before the, this, this decision was rendered by the Supreme Court. I hope they don't take notice of it because they're trying to rescind all of these other things. I shouldn't have said that. When we were married in 66, I think there were probably about 15 or 16 states that, where it was illegal. And for, when the decision came down, it was an important decision for us as individuals and other couples, but you know, it was also a major civil rights event and a significant victory for the civil rights movement.
I must say, as a 21-year-old bride, 57 years ago, I never would have imagined that I would be standing, accepting a proclamation in behalf of others, and I'm thrilled by this. It's very delightful. I mean, after such a fraught experience back in 66 and there, I have stories, but I won't go into them. But we got married in Indiana in 66 and had we gotten married in 65, we would have been illegal because Indiana just changed their laws in 65, so, or 66, actually. So that was kind of special and it, what's, as you mentioned, our actual anniversary is June 12th, which is Loving Day. So my gosh, how could, how could we miss?
That's perfect.
The stars are aligning on this and I want to thank our friends from the NAACP and other friends in the community, including Miss Smith, our good friend, for being here with us today. I mean, it's kind of a strange time to be together on this, but I'm very happy about it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. I have one more proclamation to read. Whereas Oxford Masonic Lodge Number 67 F and A M was chartered on the 14th of January, 1823, and will celebrate its 200th year of fellowship and service in 2023. And whereas the Oxford Masonic Lodge holds a place of honor as one of the oldest continuously existing organizations in the city of Oxford. And whereas for 200 years, the brothers of Oxford Lodge 67 have contributed to and supported local charities and organizations and schools with generous gifts of time and resources that have benefited the citizens of Oxford and the surrounding community. And whereas the Oxford Masonic Lodge will hold its reconsecration ceremony on the 17th of June of this year, now therefore I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim June 17th, 2023, to be Oxford Masonic Day in the city of Oxford in recognition of the 200th anniversary of the founding of the Oxford Masonic Lodge 67 and in appreciation for the contributions of the Oxford Masonic Lodge to the community. I bet there's somebody from the Masonic Lodge who would like to accept it.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, on behalf of all the brethren, and there are a number of my brothers here, would you guys like to stand up? I'd like to thank you on behalf of all of us for this honor you've bestowed on us. We are celebrating, as you said, our 200th year. It has not always been an easy 200 years. We've been meeting basically at the same corner in that building there and, well, it's a new building, but it's the same place since 1852, since 1852. It took us a while to buy the whole place, but now that is history now. And we are having a, we are having, on the 17th, on, well, I should say that we are sponsoring one of the Thursday night concerts on the 15th. And on the 17th, in part of our celebration, to share our, our birthday with the rest of the town that we've tried to be so much of a part of, we are doing a, a charity fundraiser for the students in the elementary school for their playground. So once again, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations to everybody. And at this time, we will allow public comments and anyone wishing to address counsel on items that are not on the agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda and you would like to address them, now would be the time to do that. If you would like to, you can come right up to the podium. Otherwise, you can wait till your item comes up on the agenda that you're interested in. And just give us your name and where you live and we'll give you five minutes. There's little lights there on the podium.
I only need a few. Uh, street address or just?
Well, just where you live.
Okay. I, uh, my name is Stephanie Pearson and I live in Long Meadow, um, in Oxford, Ohio. So, um, I stand before you tonight as a representative of the Oxford and Kramer Elementary Community and the Oxford Masonic Lodge. As you may know, when the new Kramer was built, the update did not extend to our playground. Our principal secured project-specific funds to replace the lard structure at the front of the playground, but all of the equipment must be removed as it is not up to current code and we are unable to replace it alone. As we've established, the Oxford Masonic Lodge is celebrating its 200th consecration in the community this year and to celebrate is hosting an inaugural car and bike show on June 17th to benefit the Kramer Elementary School Playground Project. As a teacher and Oxford community member, I am grateful for the opportunity to partner with the Masons to bring people to Uptown Oxford in the summer, to support summer businesses by bringing a crowd, and to collaborate with an organization with a rich history in our community, all to benefit Oxford children and families. But we've hit a snag and we're here tonight to ask for your help. City employees tell us that the Oxford Masonic Lodge needs to pay for every single uptown meter in the festival space for the entire day, though the festival runs from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This is money taken directly from Kramer Elementary students. City employees tell us that every uptown event pays these meters. They tell us that it's up to city council to make the changes. We know that the farmer's market pays $250 for the year. We know on a normal June afternoon, not every meter would be occupied for the entire day to the benefit of the city. Most importantly, we are aware that this is money taken directly from a benefit for Oxford community children. So we, I, I stand here today to appeal to the city council, who gets to decide these changes. We look to you, our, our elected officials, to help us bring people to the community, to give business our patronage during this quieter season. Can we have a conversation about the $3,710 invoice that would otherwise benefit our local school district? The Masons want to give back to the community by helping local businesses, by bringing positive exposure to our city, and by benefiting our children. At a time when families are looking to move away, we are looking for the city to invest in us for the future of our community. We believe that city council's values are aligned with our own and we look forward to a positive resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. We'll have staff address it. We'll have staff address it and we'll also presumably have an opportunity to comment at the end of the, of the meeting. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel tonight? Thank you all for coming. We're very glad that you're here. We will move then to the consent agenda. Can we have a motion to approve it?
Is that moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We will move to resolutions and city clerk can read the first one.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with West Tech Engineering LLC for the construction, operation, and maintenance of a water softening pilot plant per city standards and specifications at a cost of $83,805 plus a contingency in the amount of $8,380.50 for a total cost not to exceed $92,185.50.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Is that moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mike?
Your Honor, members of council, as you know, the council awarded a contract to Strand Associates for the design and engineering of a new softening plant to soften the city's hard water. As a requirement from the EPA, we will have to run a pilot plant, basically a scaled-down version of what we're ultimately going to design our, our full-scale plant for. It'll have to run for a minimum of 2,000 hours so that we can ascertain design characteristics of how these membranes are going to perform, what level of hardness they'll remove from our water, and other water quality parameters that need to be studied and evaluated. So we'll use all of that data and that will be used in the design of our full-scale plant. So along with Strand, we developed specifications and drawings for the plant. We had two bidders, both well-qualified, and we're recommending you go with the lowest and best bid. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors? Yeah, go ahead, Glenn.
I'm so happy this is happening right now. I mean, when I got on the council in 15, we just laid the groundwork to set aside funding to get to this point and finally we're at the back point. Also, as a side note, I have a total dissolved solid water tester. And when you made the presentation for the actual whole project itself, your calculation was dead on correct. It was, you know, 355 when I looked at mine and I'm fairly positive that two-thirds of that is just hard water because the averages after you remove the hardness is around 115. And I just hope that we see that, that the similar results is your projections in your pilot project is, I know there, myself included, there's a lot of people waiting on soft water to come to Oxford.
Thank you.
Can you tell us is, what happens after this test? Let's say it's successful. Does the mini-part of this treatment center, does that become part of the larger or is it all discarded?
Uh, it will not be used in the full-scale plant. So this is a scaled-down version, but the design characteristics and the data that we collect from it will be used for the full-scale plant. I don't know if it will have value when we're finished. There might be a utility out there somewhere that could possibly use it and it might have some value.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll put it on, with your approval, we'll put it on GovDeals or something like that and test the water, so.
Super.
Remains to be seen if it has any.
Okay.
Value when we're done with it.
Right. Thank you very much. David?
I would just say this is one of many down payments we're making on what would ultimately be really a large capital project, one of the largest we've done in a while. In addition to softening our water, which will be good, I think this is one of these things that's better done collectively than individually. So in the future, we will not have water softeners in our basements and 40-pound bags of salt and all of that stuff that we all do individually will be handled collectively. And so I think ultimately this is going to be an incredible efficiency for everyone, but it's going to be an investment to get there and this is just part of that process.
When I first got on council, back in the Stone Age, it was 1987, we were talking about water and water treatment and the hardness of the water back then. And so it's been a continuing issue for as long as I can recall. And I, I share your excitement that we're at that point and Glenn's, that we're, we're getting there, so.
So we're pleased with progress so far. Design is on schedule. Other news on the water utility, we, we've taken our 2 million gallon tank offline and that is getting restored inside and out. So there's a lot of work going on in the, in the water utility.
Super. Thank you very much. Are you all ready to vote? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. You can read number two.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to utilize the American Rescue Plan Act funds to contract with a consultant to update the development code and repeal and replace Part 11 of the Oxford Codified Ordinances and create an incentive structure to encourage affordable housing, economic development, sustainable development practices.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Is that moved?
Second.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Jessica?
Good evening, councilors. I bring forward tonight a resolution kind of a little different than normal, but because we want to use American Rescue Plan Act funds, we want to seek your permission before we even draft an RFP for this. So in our research to promote economic development and affordable housing, a consistent theme that is coming up over and over and over is the need to develop, update our development codes and also create an incentive structure. An allowable use of ARPA is to do a comprehensive review of existing zoning codes and identify areas that require updates and modifications. It is our intention to release a request for proposals for a consultant who will come in, hopefully in-house if we're lucky, and help us develop language to repeal and replace Part 11 of the city codified ordinances. This will include repealing and replacing the planning and zoning code, subdivision regulations, and Oxford zoning code. It's our goal to have a unified development code. Because we want to do a pretty big overview, we also are going to ask them to look at a survey of historic properties, cultural assets, update our historic district guidelines, and then develop an incentive package for these comp plan goals of affordable housing, economic development, and sustainable development practices. We anticipate that this contract will be over 50,000 and will require council approval. So if you're okay with this concept, we'll put the RFP out, we'll hopefully get some strong responses, we'll score it, and come back to you for approval with a final dollar amount and then permission to enter into that contract. This will be a large, huge project and we anticipate that it'll take most of the community development staff and a lot of economic development staff time in the year 2024. Let's see. With that, I believe that's everything I wanted to bring up to you tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this one? Come on up. Chris? Shauna?
Hi there, I'm Shawna Rosenberg. I live at 1036 Arrowhead Drive. I am here to speak in support of you guys deciding on using ARPA funds for this project. I was just mentioning earlier this evening, Dave and I worked with Housing Advisory Commission back in 2017, 2018, to bring an incentive package that we could put into our code for developers. Obviously, it's now 2023. That has not happened as yet, but it's really exciting that with the strategic plan that we've just put into place, with the support of the Housing Advisory Commission, with the support of the Planning Commission, it would just be amazing if you were to use the ARPA funds for this because to get it started as soon as possible is the best way to go. This is going to be a ton of work and I'm really excited to see it get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Shauna. Chris?
Good evening. My name is Chris Scoblin, 211 Ryan Drive. I'm here on behalf of HAPC. As part of the comments Jessica made talked about the design guidelines, it has been on our dashboard for the HAPC for longest time to get the design guidelines updated. You may recall, we've gotten the inventory done, we've updated the ordinance, the third leg of our stool, as we always described it, was the design guideline. So I would encourage you strongly to support this and so we can get these design guidelines moving. We've been waiting a long time. And with the design guide hopefully being successful, that will then enable us to approach other areas that we have under consideration for potential historic districts, but we need the design guidelines to go forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else who would like to address this resolution? Okay. Thank you very much. Counselors? Comments or questions? Go ahead, Dave.
So I would say that this is really wonderful because we just invested a lot of money and the community's time and staff time in a wonderful, comprehensive plan, it's a visionary plan. I teach urban planning, I love plans, but plans don't actually, there's a middle step between the plan and the outcome and that's our code. And so you can have the most wonderful, comprehensive plan, but if your code is still rooted in the early 21st century or some of it dates back further than that, you're just not going to get the outcomes that you hope for in terms of housing affordability, sustainability, or anything else. So I think this is really, really wonderful. So this is a question I have, which is what's the timeline? You're talking about 2024. Is it possible that, you know, if things go well, we could start? The city manager uses the metaphor of eating that elephant and this is a really big elephant. And, and, and while our comprehensive plan was really nice and visionary, these touch on things that have property rights interests in them. So they're very, each, we have to be really careful as we go through this. So what's the optimal timeline you can imagine if everything goes well?
Well, we already have a draft of the RFP penciled. So what we would do is if you give permission is we would polish it, get it ready to be released. That's a, probably a 60 to 90-day process to get all of those out, receive applicants, review them, and then bring them back to you. So that puts us into the fall pretty quickly. And then based on their availability, we could get them started, but it's probably going to be third or fourth quarter at our luckiest. And then this, as to your point, is a behemoth project. And so we'd anticipate that they would be working on this for close to a year. Our goal though is that by having a consultant, this is all they would work on. It wouldn't be, you know, like staff, we're often pulled away on other projects. And so it would still, it would still take a lot of staff time to answer questions, give input and guidance, but then this person could go back to the drawing board and start crafting. We would love to see a draft by the middle of next year and then a final, you know, some public comment and that type of thing with a final draft by the end of next year, but it really is going to be on, because it has to have legal, like you said, legal review, everything, it's going to be a, a big project.
And I'm presuming then, how do you imagine utilizing our boards and commissions? Because there's just so many different eyes would have to be on this from a historic preservation point of view, from an environmental point of view, from a planning commission point of view. So how do you imagine engaging our boards? So we, the code reflects our?
We felt, in our opinion, that the comp plan process involving boards and commissions worked really well with them giving feedback throughout that process and we would imagine using a similar process with this, with the code update.
Huge fan. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. If there's no other comments, all those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is adopted. We'll move to C.
A resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to apply for a grant from the Ohio Ambulance Transportation Program.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt? Is that moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Chief Deathridge, we're glad to see you here.
Good evenings. Glad, glad to be here. I'm here tonight to ask for permission to apply for the grant from the Ohio Ambulance Transportation Program. This grant was created by the state using ARPA funds to provide premium pay for individuals that provided ambulance transportation services during COVID. That's pretty much the extent of it. I wish I had some more to explain to you, but that's.
That's what it's about.
Pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Chief, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Counselors, any comments, questions? Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So this, this is really just for those employees during COVID. This is totally separate from our, some of our other budgetary, I mean, it's a small amount of money.
Correct.
But it's not about anything moving forward. This is just about those people who served.
This is the period during COVID, yes.
Okay. If there's no other comments, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? It's approved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will move now to ordinances, and we have several ordinances on first reading, so because it's first reading for the public to understand, we don't take a vote on it, we don't have motions, we're just going to read it and we'll talk about it. So we'll have the clerk read the first one.
An ordinance granting the request of the Ohio Association of Regular Baptist Churches to connect to and/or extend the city water and sanitary utilities to serve a proposed 92-unit hotel at 525 North Campus Avenue outside the Oxford corporate limits.
Okay, and we'll have Mike to take us through this.
Good evening again. We have a request from the Ohio Association of Regular Baptist Churches to expand existing utilities for the parcel that they own. For reference, this is North Campus Avenue at the bottom of the screen, and this is the corporate limit. So this large parcel is where they're proposing a 92-unit hotel. It is currently served with a small water service that was approved for the small building there back in 1980, approved by city council. With the demands associated with the 92-unit hotel, along with the firefighting, fire suppression system, they will need a significant upgrade in service. We initially received the request from the developer's architect and engineer. We immediately sent a letter to them, letting them know that this is solely in the purview of city council, since it is not inside the corporate limits of the city. As I said, this is a proposed 92-unit hotel that will fill the site. We are somewhat concerned there's a six-inch main on Campus Avenue. They are proposing a six-inch demand for the site. So while we, we will need a little bit more study time, we will likely require a connection, an eight-inch connection over to, say, Route 732, so that the system is looped, and that will be a benefit to our system, as we will no longer have a dead-end water main at the end of North Campus. So solely from a utility standpoint, this is a good project for the city. This would be a good customer, will provide some revenue to the city, and ease pressure on the rest of the ratepayer base. As staff has discussed this, there are concerns with the property and the annexation of that property into the city. I've talked with Sam, he's provided a memo addressing some of these points, and he said he's willing to take questions tonight pertaining to zoning or planning, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have them on the utilities.
Super, thank you, Mike. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this? And I guess I would begin if there's anyone from the developers or the owners of the property who would like to address it. You can come forward now.
My name's Steve Alexander with MWA Master Builders out of Indianapolis. We are a representative of the Marriott brand that we intend to build here. And interestingly, we, one of our partners is an alumni, his kids attend the university here, and when he proposed that, it'd be a really cool place to build a hotel, it's like, there's no land in town, it's going to be really difficult to find a site. And fortunately, we stumbled into this abandoned, sort of dilapidated church property that's been used for waste fill over the years, and a lot of people have been dumping things on it, and it's fallen into great disrepair. So when we started out, we had the opportunity to approach the city. It came out of a process where, when we bought it, we said, the church has water, it's got utilities, it's got gas, it's all ready to go, seemed like a good, good place to start. And so we went to the county and applied for zoning. Our purchase agreement has a zoning contingency clause, and if we can't get zoning, we won't be able to close. And furthermore, our financing and investment parameters require us to execute the project in a timely manner. And so I believe it was in February, we originally issued a flow test on the hydrant to determine if there was enough water capacity in the pipe, not really thinking about other complications. And so that's when it came to our attention, that the ideal situation would be to become annexed, and we started talking about time framing of that process. And we didn't really see any conflicts with what annexation would require in terms of site planning and working with the city on objectives of the site and agreeing to all of the specific parameters. In fact, had a meeting with the city manager and staff, planning staff about it, and kind of laid out, and we agreed on all of the conceptual issues that we would like to help get resolved. The stumbling point was the schedule of annexation based on our lender requirements and the performance objectives of Marriott. So we came to you today to respectfully request that process that we embark on annexation for the purpose of receiving the benefit of utilities, but perhaps not as fast as the city would like, in that we are, have a hearing on the 20th at the county to have our conditional use permit approved. And so the big picture of how we're working with the city and intend to comply with all the requirements, just the shifting around of the pieces to meet the schedule is going to be a little more complicated, I think, than everybody would like.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
As developers, are you willing to follow all of the city code that would apply if you were in the city as you develop this project, or are you going to follow county code and then ask to be annexed?
Our current path that we're on is Plan B, as you described there. We've already received proper zoning from the county. The final step in that process is the conditional use ordinance. So the objective of our meeting a couple of weeks ago was to try to flush out what are the points between the city and the county that we would need to step up on, and we're still kind of discovering what those potential differences would be. But in a cursory review, we don't think there's going to be any significant conflicts between those. Our objective is to have the site developed in a very park-like environment, you know, how many have all been out there and kind of seen the property? It has some really beautiful environmental kind of possibilities there that we want to take most advantage of, to create that park-like environment at the end of Campus Avenue and on the side of the stadium parking lot and things.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to address this proposal?
Hi, councilors, my name is Timothy Cameron, I live at 5258 Morning Sun Road, Oxford, Ohio. The top horizontal black line, the northern border of the main parcel, is the southern border of my property. I do want to say that I have no objection to the building of hotels. As a matter of fact, of all the possible township B3, general business uses that could be put on that property, I think a hotel is one of the more desirable ones. Also, anybody who tries to go up and down Morning Sun Road on graduation day knows that the traffic can back up more than half a mile north on Morning Sun Road at the traffic light of Sycamore and Morning Sun Road. And I think having people able to stay in a hotel at that location and be able to walk across the parking lot to graduation in Jaeger Stadium or Mallett Hall would alleviate some of those traffic concerns. So I am supportive of the hotel as a residential neighbor. I would like to point out that the eastern border is the Miami University east of Mallett Parking Lot, but the other three borders, my border, the western border of the subject property, with the exception of the lilac coloring, which is an office industrial, except for that small sliver, and then the southern border of the property are all residential properties. So I would like to see strict adherence to zoning restrictions. The city has a 90% opacity, meaning residential boundaries should not be able to view more than 10%, I think is my interpretation of that, of the subject property. The township zoning has a berm requirement, an eight-foot-high berm. For me, that would be important. What you can't tell from this figure is that there's a very steep drop-off immediately to the north of the property on my property, so that my main windows and the southern exposure are right at ground level. So if you have a lot of traffic there, those headlights are shining right into my house. So I would, I'm supportive of this, I simply want to see them following appropriate zoning restrictions.
Super, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming. Is there anyone else who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, councilors, you have questions or comments?
I do, but some others may.
So I wonder also whether Mr. Perry could talk about, because right now, we're talking about this in the context, this solely is a question about whether we should enable them to connect to our water service. But it ties in all these other zoning issues and that is behind the scene, that there's months of process with the county, there would potentially be months of process with the city. So I'm kind of curious from Mr. Perry about what some of the Plan A, Plan B, Plan C of what the outcomes are, because we could say, no, we're not going to connect, yes, we're going to connect whatever is zoned is the county, but I'm kind of curious about the middle pathway, which is how could this comply with the city of Oxford so that we can have neighbors have an opportunity to express their concerns, so it could meet the high standards of the city of Oxford? Not to say that the county doesn't have the same standards, but their zoning is more permissive in the B3 than ours is. Gas station could go in there hypothetically, you know, under county zoning, they don't have the strictest adherence to some of the pedestrian and architectural standards. So yeah, I'm kind of curious before, if we were going to do this, what those conditions would be to annexation?
As you said, the processes are very different, so the county process does have a hearing, but the criteria for the decision-making is different, and the hearing wouldn't be run by the city, so it would be solely done by the county. So there really, we haven't discovered a middle process that would go through the same design standards and design criteria that are in the city code for both our conditional uses, whether it's in the county or in the city. So if this was approved, then it would just solely go through the county process. The county staff have told us that they would take in our comments as staff, but there wouldn't really be a hearing, so there's not really a good way to replicate that that I'm aware of. So I think really, it would just be up to council to decide whether you would kind of trust the urgency that's necessary from the developer team. I think to truly respect the city process, it would be to go through the traditional annexation, and then it would be in the city and we go through all the city processes. And so I think what you've heard from them is that there's a certain degree of urgency, and other than the sales contract, I'm not sure where all that is coming from, and I think it's clear that a hotel is a, is an okay use, it's an A use, there could be other uses that could happen there. It's already zoned, as you said, so if it's zoned in the county now, then once utilities is provided, then it could be any, any type of use in there. You could attach conditions, if you felt it was necessary, to a utility agreement of some kind. I wouldn't recommend negotiating that kind of on the fly tonight, but if you wanted to give some indications of what your individual concerns are as council members, then we could take that into consideration and meet with the development team. However, that wouldn't, that wouldn't replicate what the public hearing would be, but it would at least give us some guidance that we could talk with the development team about to see whether it's worth pursuing some sort of middle path. We could talk to the county staff again as well. So, but the county staff treats it as our project, they know we'll serve it, it just happens to be not annexed and county zoning, so.
I would point out that we've been burned on this before, and I'm, I'm very cautious about moving forward, so I appreciate your question.
Yeah, if I could just, just share it, kind of, because we talked about this in the planning commission, kind of at a conceptual level about what this would mean, and I think the planning commission, and Jason could correct me if I'm wrong, was in support, as Mr. Cameron said, of a hotel in general. Miami has talked about developing a hotel near Mallett. This is an underutilized parcel, it's adjacent to the city, it's a lot of benefits of doing this kind of development adjacent to campus as opposed to out on College Corner Pike, but I feel like the planning commission was very explicit about that it should go through city of Oxford process, not just because that's right, it would be in the city, but also this, you know, the city has bought picks and pokes before on this, that things have gone through the county and then become, and we're still living with the consequences 20 years later of some of those things. Because the thing is, once you annex something and it's zoned, we're all chasing after a hotel, which sounds great.
But it's grandfathered.
But it could be, it's zoned for everything, you know, and, and that could be by right under the county. So I would say, one, I'm sorry, I mean, if time were of the essence, I wish we could have been talking with the developer, it's adjacent to the city, it could have been in the city process for months already, instead of go through this whole sideways process...
Could have been annexed by now.
A backdoor process to bring it into the city of Oxford. And so I'm not happy that the way this is, this has gone, because, and from that point, if you, one could just say, no, like, we just, if we don't serve it with the water, we don't annex it, you know, we weren't part of the conversation, we could just be, just no. But I think people felt, at least in the planning commission, that they were in support of it in theory if it were done the right way, and I think there's a right way to do it. One way is, is to go through annexation, we would assign it zoning in the city of Oxford, you know, it might still be general business, but at least it wouldn't permit gas stations as a by right, like the B3 does in the county. And then it would come through a conditional use process, in which we would be able to pay attention to those, the details that matter to us. I mean, no offense to the rest of the county, but they don't care about walkability like we do. We don't care about connectivity, the aesthetics, the neighborhood, like, we have a higher design standard in the city of Oxford, and maybe developers don't love that, but I think projects come out better as a result. This thing could be a really beautiful addition to Oxford, adjacent to Miami's campus and here from Miami, how can we connect it all so it all fits together? Or it could be, I think your report describes it as kind of a suburban-style hotel adjacent to the city of Oxford. So, you know, I don't want to just say no, and if the only other option is B, yes, we can annex, but on the condition of coming through the city of Oxford process, then I think that's the best way. If there were, if time were so much of the essence, it seems to me one could do an annexation slash development agreement that could come through some, I mean, you could work through the planning commission to discuss what the criteria would be to modify the county's development, add those as conditions as part of a development agreement, I don't know if that would be a legal pathway that might be more expeditious, but if it has to be A versus B, I say not no, but yes, but with conditions, and it comes through our process, so that's what I would say.
Thanks, Dave. Did you want to...
You, several times, Dave, people have said all the things I was going to say.
I know you wanted to speak earlier, so.
It's been handled very well, also with staff comments previously for other topics. Yeah, I agree with that, it would have to be conditional, you know, expedited, deferred, but it'd have to have strong, strong backing legally for conditional use.
Glenn?
I just want to put a different lens on it, but to Dave's point, I agree with all the things you just said. My concerns would be, I would like to see at least a memorandum of understanding that basically says, if we do this for you, then you are going to come in and adhere to our process. That makes sense. I was on council when South Point happened. I have heard about other stuff before South Point. You know, it's, we have been burned, like, so we still have the scars, and that's one of those things where, for me at least, it's an issue of trust. And that's one of those things where, for me at least, it's an issue of trust. But my desire for economic development and overall land value far outweighs my lack of trust in this particular situation. And here's why. That land is worth, we'll call it a value of X. That land coming into the City of Oxford via annexation and having a hotel on it is going to be a significant multiple of X. So the taxes for just the property value are going to help our school district tremendously. Along with that, it's a hotel, which means multiple jobs are going to come to the City of Oxford, which means income tax is going to come to the City of Oxford, of which those types of things I'm very excited to hear about. All of those are tremendous things for the town. So I would love to see that hotel exist here in the City of Oxford as an annexed piece of Oxford. So that's another one of those reasons where I say, like, I want to make sure that it comes into town. You know, we're debating setting the infrastructure up, and they are offering an implied act of becoming annexed. They could always see that we hook up all that stuff, and then something falls apart, they say no, and it still stays in the township. We don't get any of those benefits. Is that a likelihood? No. But is it possible? Yes, because we've seen that kind of stuff before. That being said, I still believe the economic benefits to both our school district and the City of Oxford outweigh that. So I consider it to be an acceptable risk, and I'm willing to see that move forward. Plus, even if nothing happens and we put in that particular infrastructure, it's still going to increase the value of that land and make it more attractive in case other things don't happen.
So short of asking them to go through the annexation process first and then complying fully with city codes, we've been, I've heard a couple people talk about a middle ground, perhaps a memorandum of understanding. I'm curious to know what kind of legal teeth something like that could have.
Let me jump in first, if I might. You know, there is a third way. It's not going to meet their timetable. If you remember Al's Landing, it was not in the city either. And they met with us early on, and we got the annexation process going. We would do an expedited type two. It requires 100% of the property owners. You know, I would like to see all three of them sign a petition. Then that gets submitted to the county, and then we basically pass a resolution stating that we'll provide these services. Now, that's a five-month process, maybe four months if we're lucky. We had a little problem with the county on the last one. I think it added a month to it, but let's say four to five months. Unfortunately, they're saying that their timetable is such, they want to get going this summer, this July 15th. With this third option, they're not going to make that. But once we start the annexation process and we have 100% of the property owners signing it, it's pretty much a done deal. It's cut and dried with expedited type two. So, you know, with this process, we could go ahead with our planning commission and review plans, even though they could not file the final plat until it's in the city, until that process is complete. But, you know, they could review it like we did with Al's Landing, and then we would have some direct input. I don't really favor any of these agreements that's been discussed, because they've become problematic for us. And I'd rather go through the process with our planning commission, because then they have some direct input. As we all know, all codes have some discretion in them. And, you know, that way our planning commission could make some decisions, have some input. We would have public input because we have public hearings. But, you know, that's a third way of doing it. But I know it's not going to meet their timetable.
Did you want to respond to?
I, you know, I'm happy to explore options with staff. I, you know, speaking off the cuff, I don't know if I could advise a better alternative than what's already been discussed. I think what the city manager mentioned certainly makes sense.
Well, hopefully, we'll have some time between now and the second reading. I have to say that while I'm very much in favor of the project, and I was not happy that the property owners were not notified of the planning commission meeting. On the other hand, we've been burned. And fool me once, you know, the old adage, I'm not sure I'm willing to be fooled a second time. And so there's a big level of trust there that frankly, there's no reason for us to have that trust. There's no basis for that. So I would like to see some sort of a middle ground that either does a simultaneous annexation or does have an agreement with the developers that they will follow our code as they develop their property and go through the planning commission and all those processes. And if they do that, then I'm willing to allow this annexation process to go along at the same time. But I will tell you that if they had started with annexation with the city, it would be annexed by now, and there would be no problem. And so I guess the problem, the thing that's probably running through the minds of most of the people watching this is, what exactly is the rush here? And I think the rush was manufactured in order to get us to go ahead and give them the water and sewer they need for the project, and then, well, yeah, we'll annex later. Meanwhile, we'll use the county's very porous, I don't want to be too critical of the county, I like the county, but.
Permissive.
County is more permissive. And so they don't need to follow all of our, and I suspect that could have been part of their decision-making. I don't know. How would we know? How would we know? So for me, I'm inclined to say no to this if there's no middle ground. And hey, then you can sit down. And then the developer can make a decision. And you can say either, well, you're going to delay us, we're not going to be able to do it, and we'll say, oh, okay. You see, it's not that important to us that we're going to break our codes in order to get you here. I remember saying that to Walmart a number of years ago, too. So, yeah, it would be good. One of the questions that I have is, he mentioned a purchase. Is this going to be purchased by Marriott Corporation? Are they going to own the property? Or will it still be owned by the church? That has tax consequences, so I'd like to know.
I believe the church has an option with the developer. So the developer, Master Builders LLC, will be the purchaser of the property.
Okay, so it will not be owned by the church?
No, the church will sell via option.
That's good. Nothing against churches, but they don't pay property taxes, which was Glenn's point. And so I think that's important to know. So that's kind of where I'm at, is I seek a middle ground, and I hope that the developer can work with the planning department and figure out what that middle ground is that can satisfy us, who are, I think, understandably suspicious when somebody tries to go through county zoning with full knowledge and intent of coming into the city, because then we're ending up just accepting whatever you got away with with the county. I'm a Marriott envoy member. I go to Marriott's all the time. They're a good product, but I am not going to give them special favors. So that's how I feel.
Can I make a brief?
Yeah, now you can. Thank you. I apologize for not clarifying that our intent in our last meeting was to enter into that agreement and figure out a way to have the teeth in it. I apologize for not knowing the whole history of your relationship with other developers or other projects. And it's really a matter of setting that schedule, when we will apply, and meeting that schedule, and complying with all of the processes that go along with annexation. We're not, have no intent of skirting that, and apologize about not knowing more about the history of Oxford and.
It's just which codes do you follow, right? That's our concern.
Yeah, yeah.
Codes and process. So if you, over this two-week period, can get together with staff.
Absolutely.
And come up with something that will satisfy council, that we're going to be able to still follow our codes, then we'll probably be fine.
Agreed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I do think that the process, I mean, sometimes when we're thinking about Al's Landing, subdivisions are extra-long process. They have to go through the planning commission, two readings of council, the planning commission, two readings of council. This is, we need to do the annexation. Planning commission needs to do a conditional use meeting, and then you need two readings on the conditional use. So you could imagine, I mean, I don't know what the timeline could be from that, and some of the conceptual review could happen even when the annexation, I mean, I don't know whether that could, those conversations could happen before. So I think the City of Oxford, if there's a way to make the process expeditious while respecting our code, I think we're open to doing that. I mean, I think the thing is, is in Oxford, if this comes into it, it will be part of the City of Oxford for a really long time.
Ever.
And if we do this right, we'll be proud of it for a really, really long time. Or if it comes in the wrong way and is developed the wrong way, we'll be living with the consequences unhappily for a really long time. So, yeah, we can do it the right way.
Thanks, David.
Yeah, I think one point I want to make is that there is sometimes a difference between intent and outcome. So even if taking your point to heart that you had no, you have no intention of skirting around, sometimes you run into hiccups, and the easiest thing to do is to say, well, we don't really have to do it the city's way. And so it's not really a reflection on what we think your intention is, but all of the little unknowns that can come along the way, that can put us into a pickle where we end up having to just sort of go along in the end.
Okay. Any other comments from, no, I'm sorry, public comment's over. So we will hear it again, and so if you do have public comment, you can bring it up at our second reading. And we appreciate your willingness to work with staff and come up with a middle ground.
Just a real quick final question. Will you develop recommended condition language as part of the second reading? Because right now, it's just, the condition is upon annexation with the city. Does that imply everything we just discussed, or do we need a more specific language in the second?
Let's let them talk about it, because I think.
Okay.
Our planning.
Yeah, I need to meet with staff. I would just love to have specific language ahead of time on what the conditions are before second reading.
I think that's doable.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move to the second.
An ordinance authorizing the tax budget for the year 2024 and directing that the same be transmitted to the Butler County Auditor.
Okay.
So moved.
Oh, sorry. No, we don't.
Oh, it's first reading.
First reading. So I'll recognize Heidi, welcome.
Good evening. I am bringing the, this is the annual tax budget to be submitted for the coming year 2024 to the Butler County Tax Commission in accordance with requirements stipulated by Ohio Revice Code. The tax budget required for the county is essentially a preliminary budget estimate for next year. Beginning in August, we will undertake our normal detailed line-on and budget analysis and preparation. We'll spend approximately three months of intensive preparation on our detailed budget, and the final approved budget will then be submitted to the County Budget Commission to replace this preliminary estimate. This tax budget provides our first glimpse at 2024's general fund budget. We have prepared this budget with an approximate 0% chance from the 2023 amended budget, except for a few small items. Exhibit A, Schedule A reflects the amount of property taxes as determined by the County Budget Commission and County Auditor's estimated tax rates that was passed in September of 2022. The exhibits listed on the staff report, I apologize, are incorrect. I used an old format. So Exhibit B should actually be Exhibit 1, A through C. This reflects the general fund preliminary budget. We did reduce the charges for services as we reduced the amount of the one-time transfer of the Oxford Cemetery funds. There's also a reduction of miscellaneous, which is due to the reimbursement from the damages at the Oxford Senior Center. But the biggest reduction is the amount of the advanced Oxford Area Trail for Phase 3 and 4, its construction is being conducted this year. This is reflected in both revenues and expenditures. The public hearing, as well as the second reading for the tax budget, will be at the June 20th City Council meeting. I will be on vacation at that time, so Acting Assistant Finance Director Stephanie Gray will be presenting him in place.
Thank you, Heidi.
And I know that Joe had typically read all the numbers in the past, and we've kind of discussed it, and, yeah.
Bless you. Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Yes, I think we can all read, so I appreciate that. Counselors, any comments or questions? Okay. All right. That takes us to announcements and communications, and I'll recognize the city manager first.
I just have a couple things I would like to share with council and the public. We did close this week on our two properties, 603 and 607 West Chestnut Street. The purchase price for both parcels was $318,000 plus closing costs. We utilized American Rescue Plan funding to purchase the parcels, as you know, and the plan is to utilize the land for an affordable housing project, which we'll be bringing in at a later date. The second thing that I want to share with city council is, as you know, the Regional Income Tax Agency, or RITA, administers our local income tax. They also administer the income tax for over 422 Ohio jurisdictions. This service has proven to be very effective and efficient in the collection and administration of the city's income tax. In 2022, RITA collected about $10.6 million total for the general fund, as well as the Fire EMS Fund, with an administrative cost of $106,907. This represents a 1.01% of the collection total, so that's very, very effective. The city's agreement with RITA calls for a 3% retainage, and so the city will receive a refund amount of $209,742. And that's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay. Chief?
I'm speaking, Mayor, and members of city council. At a recent meeting, Counselor Franklin asked me to present some information regarding the new texting and driving law for the benefit of the public and those who watched this meeting, so I'm going to just take a couple minutes to do that. The new law, it's codified in Ohio Vice Code 4511.204. It went into effect in April. There's a lot packed into that new law, and there's various restrictions, some exceptions, but the basic message is, is do not engage with your phone at all while you're driving. If you must engage with your phone, you should pull over to a safe location and park your vehicle first. The new law makes this a primary offense and gives officers the ability to pull drivers over if they witness the violation. We're in the introductory, in the educational phase of the law, in which only warnings can be issued by police officers. Enforcement of the law with citations can begin on October 5, 2023. Currently, officers themselves are working to understand the law. Like I said, there's a lot packed into it, and we're developing messages to put out to the public to help educate and put those on social media. So watch for those on our Facebook page. We've begun working on them to put them out. There's also videos you can go watch that explain the law from a lot of our partners. So what I think we all need to start doing is kind of getting ourselves out of those bad, unsafe habits. And I'm including all of us in that conversation. There are so many drivers on our road who are not paying attention while they're driving, and one of those challenges is the phone and the texting. And that puts us all, you and your loved ones, at risk. Since 2018, the Ohio State Highway Patrol reported over 60,000 crashes and 1,800 serious injury or fatal crashes, which involved a distracted driver. And that's just the ones they could determine were a distracted driver. So parents, we need you to have hard conversations with your teenage drivers about distracted driving, and also about seatbelt use, speeding, impaired driving, all those hard topics that we all have to have talks with. So kudos to all those who use that do not disturb feature on their phone while they're driving and who've already developed those safe habits. That makes us all safer. And thanks to all our social media followers, be looking for our messages to come out on this topic, and thank you for then sharing those messages. Our partners at ODOT, Highway Patrol, NHTSA, and the Butler County Safe Communities also have been educating the public on their social media sites and working on their prevention campaigns. So you can go there and look at their videos and their materials. So. So that's, that's just the kind of the introductory thing I wanted to talk about. If you want to go into the specifics of the law, I do have things in front of me that will help me answer it. But I don't know if that addressed Counselor Franklin's question.
It did. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief DeFridge? Oh, Heidi, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Chief DeFridge?
I have nothing.
Okay. Hi, Casey. All right. Welcome, Sam.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to give a quick update on short-term rental compliance. I know that's been an interest of council over the past months and even years. We just sent out our second round of compliance letters to 48 individuals, property owners. There was a first round of letters that went out in September. So as we continue to contact property owners who are advertising, we're increasing the level of compliance. We think we're around 50 or 60% of the way done with our first kind of baseline. And after we get to close to 100%, we're gonna do an overall analysis on the money that we've spent and hopefully some staff time, and also kind of give you an idea of how much lodging tax was collected and toward compliance, and kind of give you an idea if that pilot project is worthwhile. But so far, it's going slow, but going well. Once people learn what the rules are for not only the rental inspection and approval, the permit itself, but also for the lodging tax remedal. So we've got three departments kind of working on that together, and it's going okay. So just wanted to give you an update. More data to come.
Okay, thank you very much, Sam. Jessica?
Good evening. I also just wanted to update council and, and the public, just the fact that a lot of people ask, "What do you do with Town and Gown? How do you work with Miami?" And I just want to let people know that we do meet with the Miami President's Office about once a month, and we talk about a variety of topics. We had a great meeting this morning where we talked about partnering to help AMPREX keep on going forward and working with Talawanda. We're also talking about applying for other grants to establish some infrastructure at the airport and try to bring in some new jobs and development there, and also finalizing the move-in at College Adele. So those are the types of things that we meet and talk about monthly, but it's always not top of mind, so I wanted to share that. And then also, I just want to give a shout out to our team, especially Ashley, Seth, and Heather, who have been like knocking it out of the park in the communications area right now with a new biodiversity campaign in partnership with Three Valley Conservation. The Haiku Summer in Bloom blog is up, and then a really cute and funny economic development video, if you haven't had a chance to see it, which was a hoot, in our opinion.
It's a must-see.
So, you know, I think our boards and commissions have a lot of ideas, and they bring a lot of ideas forward, and oftentimes it's staff who kind of take those ideas and kind of hit the ground running with board and commission support. But I'm just really proud of what they're doing, and I love their creativity and spirit, and kudos to them.
Are you going to give a quick summary of the staff's feeling about the parking issue? And, because I know counselors may want to address that.
I can.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay. Yes, so we do have a lot of events who use the parks and who reserve the roads. And in fact, even when I was in Joy, Oxford, I was a frequent user of the parks and roads and a frequent applicant. And I will admit, when I first started doing them, I was also surprised at the high fees that were charged. But I also realize that it takes a lot of staff time from the city to do these events, and oftentimes at overtime rates. And so we charge everyone for road closures and parking, almost everyone, four-day events. Portia pays for all their parking and road closures, and they donate to the American Cancer Society. The Oxford Chamber of Commerce pays for their wine and beer festival, pays for parking and road closure and for extra police detail. And they do, they do scholarships every year, several of them. All the Miami University sororities, fraternities, who rent the park and close the road, numerous of, all of them give donations to charities as well. And so we do waive fees when there's a council request, and we do that for Enjoy Oxford, for a 13-week concert series, which is different than a one-day event, and also the farmer's market, which is a year-round event, not a one-day type of thing. So I think we could think carefully, if you wanted to do a different fee structure, but I think we would have to think about doing it for everyone. And then that's really like, where do you draw the line? Which nonprofit is worthy and which donations are worthy and which aren't? And so it just gets a little muddy. And honestly, the park is so popular that having a fee structure does kind of help us manage the volume, if I'm gonna be honest. John Buckholz, who works in our office part-time, I would say most of his job is permit management of people who are requesting events and parks and roads and things like that. So it's not a great answer, but that's our feedback, if you want to think about that, and we'd be happy to talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Would it be fair to say that it's, the fees are revenue-neutral, and that essentially it'll be coming out of our budget if we?
Yeah, that is true. I mean, we're paying for what it costs us to do these things. And we put up, you know, it takes staff to put up the parking signs, but what people don't realize is that if someone still parked there, the police have to come in and call a tow truck and get them moved, and, you know, kind of coordinate that exodus. The streets team comes in and does road closures and detours and kind of puts people around. And then in addition to that, they come in and do trash sweeps throughout the evening. And so those fees all go toward actual, actual things.
So, but is that, so is the, is the parking meter rate thing just like a proxy for what the fee? Or do you know how much it actually costs exactly staff to do all this? Because I get covering the staff costs.
It's, to me, it's the parking meter rates, and maybe it's a wash, but...
I'm gonna let Chief Jones answer, because I don't have an answer prepared.
The fee ordinance, which is voted on every year by council, you know, we don't implement these policies just because we want to. This is a council prerogative, and you set these fee structures. And I think as a public administrator, it's our duty to be a good steward of this. But to answer your question, the fee ordinance says that for less than four hours, there are some events, like a lot of the Miami University events in the evening take up just a couple hours of the parking meter. So anything less than four hours, it costs $6 per space. Anything more than four hours costs $12 per day for that space. So if you look at the revenue that a parking meter could potentially be bringing in, that would be 11 hours for that day, which is, the rate's a dollar. So that's 11, that's $11. Of course, you know, as cars turn over, there could be more coming from that. The sign itself, we charge folks a dollar per sign. We print those signs. A dispatcher has to print all those signs, and then our public safety assistants have to go hang all those signs. They, and while the Mason's event may only be for, you know, six hours or whatever it is, well, you have to post those signs ahead of time, and you're preventing people. And then, of course, like Jessica said, if there's a car parked there now, you're using staff to call a tow truck and to get those cars moved. So, so I think that if you look at the fees for those meters, I think they're pretty accurate for what they should be. And I think we're, and, you know, for instance, the fees for the staff, I mean, it's costing the city more than what we're charging them to provide that police officer there. So, I mean, I think we're subsidizing that event as already. We're not charging them the full price that it's costing us, in my opinion.
Thank you, Chief.
I do just want to make one more comment, just for the public record. I love events. I love them. I think they're great for our economy. I can treat our parks as our community living room. And so I want them to be used. I want them to be active. It's a vibrancy. And so, but it is all about balance between what it is the staff costs and also encouraging events. So I just wanted to say that, too.
Okay, thank you very much. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay. Glenn?
I just have a comment about the whole, I'm sorry, what?
No, you may not. I'm sorry.
I figured that would happen. Hi, I just wanted to talk about the, the event fee stuff.
Sure.
I don't know if the public understands that we run at it as a loss. We just heard about that today. But more importantly, it's preventing abuse of our Uptown, as well as promoting creative placemaking. And again, I love events just as much as Jessica, probably more than Jessica does, because that's one of the reasons why I'm here. It brought me here, and then Oxford being such a fun place to be, and it's kind of like a big comfy couch that never really left. And every time that we have those events, I know that we have a lot of moving parts that people don't get to see, and all those things have a cost associated with them. And the problem with extending grace is that unfortunately, there are people that abuse grace. And I have to agree with the city on the policy that we have. You have to, unless it's a long-term, recurring relationship that you have with the city, you have to pay the fee. So that's all I have to say about that one.
Okay. Alex?
Sure. So just, I mean, thank you for bringing this forward. I also think timing is tight here, too, because of the cadence of our meetings. We don't meet again until the 20th anyway, so it's a little hard to kind of have this robust conversation in the way that Robert's Rules work and the way that our meetings are structured. It's hard to kind of have this, and then we discuss, but then public participation period has ended, so like, there's not a great dialogue opportunity because the, the event is so close to when this meeting is. So, but I do appreciate, you know, this coming forward. I appreciate staff's response. I think that's a really great point. And it is, you know, good to highlight exactly how much work goes into an event like this, right? Like, even with Chief Jones talking, I hadn't thought about like, "Oh, you can't just hang a sign at 11:00 AM and say, 'Okay, no parking, starting at 11:00 AM,'" right? Like, you have to close that spot earlier so that people aren't parking there prior to 11:00 AM, otherwise you're setting everybody up to get towed. So I appreciate that minutia being brought forward and discussed. To change topics a little bit, I do want to talk about, I was on social media the other day, and a friend who's an avid runner was mentioning that because it's been hot out lately, she's been running in the evenings and has encountered some maybe less-than-ideal vehicle behavior with not super doing a great job at stop signs and respecting pedestrian right-of-way. So just a note that as it is getting dark and people are seeking to run or be outside when it is not a billion degrees outside, if you see somebody running, you know, in, yeah, be courteous, be kind. And in a similar vein, as we are all getting outside more, I have seen maybe like an uptick in dog poop bags out on the trails. And hot dog poop smells very bad. So just again, a small note of being courteous to our fellow residents of Oxford. So there are plenty of trashcans located around the trails. If you can just hang onto that baggie until you get a trashcan, that would be great. I did also want to give a shout out to the new Summer in Oxford promo, featuring some lovely folks who are in this room. It pops up on my Instagram today, and I have never been more like tickled to be in Oxford. And I think that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Alex?
Amber? Yeah, that's okay.
We just had Alex.
First of all, Happy Pride Month to everyone. And also, I like the banner that we have uptown, so thank you for putting that up. Thank you, Chief Jones, for giving a little bit of an informational session about the new distracted driving law. And thank you for speaking tonight. I do agree with what city staff is saying, but I also understand the urgency. I don't have children in the school, but I have, I've also heard from two people who are leaving Oxford already because of what's happening with the school district. So this is, this is a real, a real problem. And so you speaking tonight has highlighted that. I thank the Masonic Lodge for doing this fundraiser. I think it's very important, even though we cannot reimburse you or waive the fees that you have requested, I encourage the community to go out and support that event. And I wanted to thank, they're gone already, but the Millers, for coming out to receive the Loving Day proclamation. It's hard for me to believe that when my husband was born, our marriage would have been illegal in many states in the US. Ohio actually repealed its anti-masogulation, misogyny laws in the late 1800s. So in many ways, Ohio was ahead of the game. But I think it's important for us to celebrate these unenumerated civil rights that we often take for granted. We're coming up to a year at which Roe v. Wade was overturned. For some people, that's a reason to celebrate. I don't think it's a secret that for me, I don't see that as a reason to celebrate. But when Justice Thomas rendered his decision, he said that because Roe v. Wade was decided based on the 14th Amendment, it was time to look at other unenumerated rights that had been decided based on the 14th Amendment. And that included the right to contraception, the right to same-sex marriage. He left out the right to interracial marriage. He happens to be in an interracial marriage. But I don't think that we should assume that everything is safe. This can be a domino effect. And so I was glad that the Millers were able to come and celebrate their love. And again, June 12th is Loving Day. So whether you're married to someone from a different race or ethnicity, you've adopted someone of a different race, it's a time to celebrate interracial, multiracial families and communities. So thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
I'm gonna hold off for next time, and so that's all I have.
Okay. David?
All right, well, thank you to the Masons for partnering, partnering. Well, hey, congratulations, 200 years is really a long time of service in the city of Oxford. Thank you for partnering with our schools. I think our schools are gonna use all the collaboration they can, given the circumst- Our schools and-
Your city school?
Well, no, Talawanda-
Excuse me, you're out of order.
The Talawanda schools, which are, so, so yes, it's gonna take partnership. And this is a confusing issue to, I mean, I think I have mixed feelings about this. One, because I actually am doing research on some of the ways cities are using their street space for public things. And, and the idea of charging an hourly meter rate sounds logical, but it makes certain things like parklets and other things prohibitive over time. So a lot of cities are getting away from that kind of one-to-one relationship of like, "This was a parking space that we used to charge a dollar an hour, 11 hours a day." And, and they're looking at their fee structure differently. So to me, when it comes to this, you know, all due respect to the chief, we typically do this along with all the other budget stuff, so we don't wade into the details of this, and, and things change. I mean, I would like, I totally get that we charge for staff time, like that. And, and if I thought that whatever we were charging for staff time was like, it was a one-to-one relationship, if it's staff plus the meter rates, I mean, I would love if we charged the staff time and we had a different structure for the meter rates, but we can't do that before your event anyway.
They are.
You're still out of order.
Okay.
So. So it's, I hope looking for, because I really would hate for these fees to be an impediment to groups using our streets when I do think that the use of the public streets is, you know, it can be a higher and better use of the parking, especially since the parking occupancy is not 100% for 11 hours a day. So you could be charging for what might be occupied 20% of the day. We don't have the time to work these things through, not to the Mason satisfaction on the timeframe, but I hope we look at it. And I always would love to have the fee ordinance come to us. And I mean, I know that, we've had conversation about other things with the fee ordinance that we would love to talk about, not in November, you know. So anyway, set that aside. A couple other things. One is, I want to thank Steve Dana, has, as you saw, has resigned from the Planning Commission. Steve Dana, as you know, has been providing incredible service to the city of Oxford. How many years on the Planning Commission, I couldn't even enumerate. City Councilor, Vice Mayor, you know, Steve has earned his rest from that kind of service, and I respect the fact that he, he wants to bring his best to it, and, and, and he wants to go out high. And I think that that's really, really commendable. But I want to thank him, because as you know, Steve, he puts his heart and soul and mind into this, and the city has benefited from that. And then another last thing is that if you haven't gotten out to the community park, we, thanks to partnership between the city of Oxford, with Miami Valley Audubon, we have a new Pollinator Garden and a new Grassland Pilot, experimenting how we might do things other than turf to promote biodiversity and reduce mowing. We happen to do it in the driest period that I've ever experienced in what's supposed to be a humid part of the country. So, you know, really kudos to city staff for helping us keep that stuff watered, because without the water, our investment in seeds and plants would die really fast. But I know that a lot of people are looking at how to naturalize their lawns, and if you want to see what that looks like, you can go see that at the city of Oxford Park. So I just want particularly to commend Steve Ol, the Landscape Maintenance Supervisor. Eric Keibler helped us come out and fix a ball vouch so we could water the stuff. Peggy Brandstrater, who's Miami Audubon, and some other volunteers who came out and helped make that pilot a reality. So thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, when it comes to parking fees, you all may not know this, but, or care, but I've argued against some of the increases in parking rates that we've had. And so I share some of the comments that you made. of the comments that you made. I definitely want to congratulate the Masonic Lodge and the brothers for 200 years, and I think this project, excuse me, that you've got going on is a really good one. And I totally identify, and I thank you for coming forward and sharing your perspective. And it may be something that we need to look at to make sure that the costs are being attributed properly. What that may mean, unfortunately, is that the costs would be higher, and I think that's what the chief was trying to say. So while this seems like, well, all that parking, if you were just based on the time of the people who are working to make that thing happen properly, it could be higher. So I reluctantly support the city staff on that. I still am in favor of lower parking rates and reduce time to 6 o'clock again. So I'll bring that up when we get to that. I also want to celebrate Steve Dana, who, as was mentioned, he was a counselor, he was vice mayor, he's a member of the Planning Commission, and even in his, in recent months, when he was unable to get around very well, I drove him around so that he looked at every property, and he wanted to see it for himself. He did his homework. He took it seriously, his responsibility to the city. And so I think we owe a debt of gratitude to Steve Dana, and I think we owe a debt of gratitude to people like him who put forward that kind of effort. It also means that if you or people you know are interested in that activity, the Planning Commission and probably BZA are the two most important, in my view, of our many important boards and commissions, then you should go to the city website, and you can put in an application, which you can find there, and council will be trying to fill that in short order. So thank you all for coming. I appreciate it. I'm sorry that things didn't work out as maybe you would have liked to. I hope that you got some response, maybe not to your satisfaction, but I still appreciate you being here. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.